Everyone, good afternoon. We have your written testimony. And again, we're, as we're running behind, if you want to just summarize and then whatever questions we have.
All right.
If I could ask, as people are leaving, please leave quietly, please, so we can continue the hearing. Thank you. Commissioner?
Good afternoon, Council President Clark. And I'm Councilmember Greenlee, member of City Council. I'm Tom Farley, Commissioner of the Department of Public Health. Joining me are Jane Baker and Sammy Girah. The Department of Public Health's mission is to protect and promote the health of all Philadelphians and to provide a healthcare safety net for the most vulnerable Philadelphians. You have my detailed testimony. Let me just mention a few key points, and then I can answer your questions. The Department's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget request is about $135 million, of which about $6.7 million is above the fiscal year '27 estimated obligations. The increased general fund expenditures are almost fully covered by corresponding increases in outside revenue. The Department's expansions are mainly in four areas. First, our efforts to address the city's opioid epidemic. Second, an expanded effort to prevent lead poisoning in children. Third, a strengthening of our restaurant inspection program. And fourth, improvements in the quality of healthcare services in our health centers. Let me just jump ahead here and say, give you a little more detail on some of these. We are strengthening our response to the city's growing opioid epidemic. Over 900 people in Philadelphia died of drug overdose in 2016, more than 200 more than died the year before, and three times the number who died in homicide in 2016. We are proposing to invest funds in fiscal year 2018 to expand access to naloxone, the opioid overdose reversal drug. We're also hoping to prevent opioid addiction before it starts with education of healthcare providers about prescribing less and mass media messages directed at consumers that we just launched yesterday, warning about the dangers of prescription painkillers. The actions we take will follow the recommendations of the mayor's task force on opioids. We're also requesting investments to prevent children from being exposed to lead from paint. Last fall, we released a plan to enhance the city's work to reduce lead poisoning. Then in December 2016, Mayor Kenny convened the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Advisory Group, including Councilmembers Bass, Gim, and Reynolds Brown, in addition to other experts and stakeholders. This proposed budget includes funding that we hope can implement many of the elements of this plan and the recommendations of this group. Thanks for your support in public health. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. I see your written testimony shows 255 vacancies at the end of last year. Could you give a reason why there's so many, or are there trouble filling them, you know, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so the Health Department has very many specialized positions, people who work in the laboratory, people who do air pollution inspections, nurses and that sort of folk. Many of these positions are difficult to fill because of their specialization, and many of them have turnover, because people can get more money if they work in the private sector. And so, we end up having more vacancies than we fill. But just to point out, we don't budget according to our total number of positions, we budget according to the positions we expect likely to be filled for the year. So we'll always carry a certain number of vacancies.
Okay. All right, thank you. And let me go to other members. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask. In the detailed book, page 87, section 45, there's a City of Philadelphia, I guess, the acute care hospital assessment, that's on page 87?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I understand this correctly. It says fiscal 2018 budgeted positions, part-time 11, and it says the annual salary's $2 million. So it's like $182,000. Is that accurate?
So Sammy Girah, Deputy Commissioner for Public Health, so you're looking at page 87 where you see $2 million budgeted?
Right, for 11 part-time positions.
So, there are many more than 11 part-time positions, so that $2 million totals many more than 11 positions. The way we budget is not by position for part-time, it's actually by total dollar amount, so that's...
So how many, it's more than 11 positions, because otherwise you're paying $182,000 per part-time?
Many of those positions are physicians who work slightly less than full-time, so those are fairly high-paid positions, physician positions.
Oh, so you're paying, so it is accurate that there's 11 part-time physicians, you're paying $182,000?
I could go back and get the precise numbers to make sure I'm giving you correct information.
And is that, that's not salaries, that's contracted work, I guess, or is that salaries?
So, so this is Class 100 you're looking at, so that's salaries?
So, on top of that, we have fringe benefits and overhead?
That's correct.
And fringe has to be at least, what, 45 to 50 percent with pension, probably 87 percent?
Although for part-time positions, they have a different fringe arrangement.
So could you give me the detail as to what we're paying in total, because it's not, it's not 182, it's probably like 250 to 300 when you include all the overhead?
We could get you that information.
Okay. That was my big question. The other question I had is, they're minor, but can you explain the $578,000 for the administration of Ryan White subcontractors? What is that, what is that for?
The Ryan White program is a federally funded program to provide services for people who are HIV infection, HIV infected, its medical services and social services. There's a lot of oversight of a variety of organizations that receive funding for that program that needs to be done by the Health Department, and so I think that that would be the administrative cost of that.
Okay. The other question I have to ask, it's right up my alley. Why do we pay $207,000 in condo fees at 1700 South Broad Street?
So Sammy Girah, so Health Center 2 is located in South Philadelphia in this new shared building that is actually not owned by the city, and this is a shared, the entire city's funding for this comes through the Department of Public Health, and that site, I believe, includes a library, a public health department, and a health clinic and a...
How many square feet are we paying, and what is the square footage that we have in that lease? That we're paying $207,000 in condo fees?
We can get you that cost. I can tell you, it's, it's a large clinic inside a even larger building that is owned by the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, and so this is, it's listed as condo fees, but it's essentially leased space, and this is the cost of the lease.
Well, that's the lease cost, not condo fees.
It's, you know, it's, it's called condo fees because of the way that the, the legal arrangement for the building, but think of it as essentially as a lease.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. Could you provide to council what your opioid public campaign plan is, and what stakeholders, and what languages you're looking to advertise in? I didn't see, I wasn't aware of it until the announcement came out, so if you could submit that to council, that would be helpful.
Okay.
I'm going to focus in on environmental health services. Councilwoman Bass, as she would hear, she would talk a little bit around this, and we've been working with some of your team on a pilot on Frankfurt Avenue. And, you know, we really have been struggling with these stop and goes. And my question to you is, because I know that there's a real commitment by this unit around foodborne illnesses and stuff, is why can't we, why can't the triggering of alcohol like bottles trigger the regular regs in what people should have in those restaurants that allows these beer distributors to have full-fledged bars?
So first of all, I very much share your concern about the stop and goes. I think that they are a real problem, and we, my eyes were really opened by the tour that I took, it was chaired by Councilwoman Bass. And so what we're doing with Canonies, that the central problem is that they have a liquor license, despite the fact that, to me, they're not meeting the legal requirements of the state, they don't have, they're not a restaurant, they don't have 30 seats, they don't serve food, which is what they need for the liquor license. So we're seeing what we can do. Right now, the Health Department's regulations say that we can take action if they are preparing food in an unsafe way. Well, if they're not preparing any food, then they're not preparing food in an unsafe way. So this was a problem that wasn't anticipated when those regulations were put in place.
Right, and I'm, I'm working with, with LNI. My point is, I mean, clearly, this whole morning, we spent talking about the state and what they don't do, what they license and what they don't do. So I got to look at what we can do here in Philadelphia. The minute they open up a bottle and serve it in a cup, doesn't all our, all of our safety surf regulations kick in? They have to have double sinks, they have to have gloves, and they have, they need the space for that. So why aren't we utilizing, because it's, it becomes an open item, I mean, you guys, when you inspect, it becomes an open item, it's being served, it should require certain temperatures, all of those things. None of these establishments have all of that.
And I can tell you, we've looked at it, and it looks like they meet the food safety regulations as currently written. The food safety regulations really are about cooking food that is likely to be contaminated with bacteria.
But when we're serving stuff, I mean, in this case, it's open containers, open containers, in heat, in different temperatures, and granted, I know we're working on some regulations, I know there's discussions with the state, but, you know, to me, this is very low-hanging fruit, right? We have an open container, temperature pieces kick in, no one's regulating that. It would seem to me that we can say to folks, "You cannot have open containers unrefrigerated, period."
Yeah, unfortunately, the refrigeration requirement isn't for all food, it's for food which is likely to get bacterial contamination if it's left at room temperature, that doesn't apply to alcohol. So I think that the regulations need to be changed.
They're serving them with those little serving things. So it's an open airborne, all the stuff you guys, all the terminals that you use.
Again, they, unfortunately, they currently meet our food safety regulations as written, which means...
Even with the sink requirements, it's open container, they don't have the dual sinks, they don't have all of the other things around cleaning the containers in which they serve.
We think they meet the current requirements. We think those regulations need to be looked at, because this sort of place, which is really essentially a bar, it is an open-air bar, wasn't anticipated when these regulations were written. So we think they need to be looked at, but...
I, I get it, I just don't think, and again, the establishments, whether it's the takeout places to just serving sacks, snacks, if their license requires that they serve food, particularly for Sunday licenses, why can't we go after them? They're not meeting their licensing requirements. Do we have to legislate that? I mean, I've watched the Health Department become very creative, and on this one, we're like not being as forceful as we can.
I'd say we are very much looking at it, and looking at whether this is something we can handle through regulation or whether it will require legislation. I'll be happy to follow with you about what we think is the best way to go here, because we do very much share your concern about these places. We think they're a real problem.
I know, but I just think that there's, there's enough there. I've seen your department close down a bar because they have foods in warming bins and the temperature's not correct. I've seen you guys do all of these creative things, and on this one, there's like this reluctance to, you know, again, it's open-air containers, the sanitation pieces around their sink, their sinks. I mean, you're very strict on sink requirements for people who use open containers.
And these places know the rules well enough to be literally in compliance, even if they're not in compliance with the spirit on them.
Then I would say to you, in light of all of the different types of legislation and regulations we've tried to establish, we need something in 30-something days that we can legislate. We can't go through this anymore. I mean, these places have become hotbeds, we're spending an enormous amount of police overtime on a matter that I think it's technicalities, and this is one of those times when people need to be creative. Tell us the tool you need, but clearly, we're lacking the enforcement tool that we need. And this is, again, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in police overtime. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman. I have a few questions, Commissioner. Thank you for testifying here today with your team. And, you know, for the record, you know, working with the Health Department, I think Councilwoman had made a statement saying that usually you can be creative and inclusive when trying to work out some issues that we have concerns with, and especially when it comes to public safety, you know, but, you know, we're always trying to work towards common goals and thinking outside the box, so I appreciate that. You said that you'll be maintaining the efforts around air pollution. What is the air quality?
We measure air quality with an overall air quality index, and we measure air quality also with specific pollutants. If you look at the quality of the air overall in Philadelphia, it's much improved over it was in past decades, but it could be further improved still. We're in probably the top 10 percent as far as cities or counties in the country with our fine particle air pollution, the type of air pollution I'm concerned about the most. So we could definitely improve if we had particularly fewer machines that are burning fuels that put out air pollution.
So how do we, so how many years will it take to really see improvement? So could you measure the improvement from last year to this year?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but in general, we do, so, you know, maybe not from year to year, but over two, three years, we can see continued gradual improvement.
All right.
I would like it to be faster than it is, but it is improving.
And our public property or our, you know, with our sanitation department, we're moving towards CNG, and so we're always trying to improve, you know, the way we utilize some of our vehicles and, you know, conserve, you know, conservation in a lot of different ways. So I think, you know, having that type of coordination with, with, with some of the, you know, vehicles that we lease and that we purchase and some of our air management controls is important. Now, are you, you are, the department in the process of a pollution survey, and is it completed and when will it be open to the public?
We are just getting start, well, let me back up. We have been measuring the air quality in the city for a long time with about a dozen different sites around the city. That's good general information, but we want to have much more detailed information. So we're in the process of a more detailed survey that will have about 60 sites around the city and enable us to essentially draw a map of air pollution across the entire city and better pinpoint the sources of the problem. We're in the process now of installing the equipment to do that, and there's going to be a certain amount of testing the equipment, making sure that we're getting data that looks accurate, and then probably be a few quarters' worth of data before we feel like, yes, we are getting reliable data to can report it out. So I don't want to promise, but I would be hopeful we would have some information by the end of the year.
Okay. Is tobacco the leading cause of preventable deaths in a city?
It is. We, by one estimate, using a tool put together by the Centers for Disease Control, it kills 2,000 people a year in Philadelphia. They updated their tool recently, and because they recognize additional causes of death, and it came up to 3,500 deaths per year. So it's a huge, huge problem that too many people feel like is behind us, but is still a major problem for us. Our smoking rates are the highest of any big city.
What other diseases are we targeting through community organizations?
I'm sorry, can I...
What other diseases are we, the Health Department, targeting through community organizations, preventative measures? I mean, so you have the smoking cessation type of education and prevention. Is childhood obesity, which is near and dear to my heart, and I think many on this, in this council, is childhood obesity, one of your preventative disease, community engagement and preventative education measures?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you look at the leading cause of death as, as far as diseases, not the risk factors that lead to them, you're going to have heart disease and cancer and stroke, and obesity is something that predisposes to all of those. So we're concerned about those and working with a variety of partners to try to increase a physical activity level and to increase people's healthy eating, so we have lower obesity rates for children as well as adults. That will help with those, you know, heart disease and stroke rates down the line.
I know you're, you're somewhat familiar with a childhood program, you know, that's near and dear to my heart called Philly Play, that's integrated in the Parks and Recs, summer camps, and after-school programs with, with our Parks and Recs as well as our, our school, Philadelphia School System. You know, it would be, I think, a tremendous leverage having the Health Department onboard and, you know, continuing to support a program like Philly Play and helping it grow and helping it be sustainable, and instead of, you know, just having to, you know, piece it together year by year. There is, you know, one-third to 40 percent of our youth are obese and, you know, overweight, the number increases more than 10. So, and it's all preventative measures, and I think it comes to leveraging, you know, the departments that we have here, leveraging the resources and the commitment to focusing in on some of these preventative diseases. And I think, you know, one of the, in addition to tobacco, you know, childhood obesity is something that we can tackle. We have a lot of partners with our meds and eds here in the city as well, and, you know, would love to, you know, to have a conversation offline and, you know, revisit, you know, childhood obesity programs for the sustainable future, right? Having it, you know, integrated, you know, where we need it the most, and that's targeting our children and teaching them to change their behavior by being an example and then putting our resources where they need to be. So, and I think it is important. I mean, you have data that proves that a lot of these preventable measures are something that we could tackle?
Yeah, and, I mean, first of all, I appreciate very much your interest in childhood obesity. This is, it's a huge problem. It's trending in the right direction, but the levels are still way too high. Issues for us is one of scale and sustainability, because it's affecting every population in the city. How do we help all those children, and how do we do it in a way that's financially sustainable? But we're, we're happy to work with you to try to figure out how we do more than we're doing now.
Parks and Recs, love it. All right, I love it. It's a play in education, change of behavior, it's measurable. Drexel College of Public Health has, has also, you know, did some analysis on childhood obesity. It's, it's right here in front of us, and I mean, it's something that I think has a trickle-down effect that's, the rate of return is unbelievable. Every dollar that we put in has a $6 in savings when it, when it comes to preventative measures. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, the Health Department is taking a look at, you know, flexi, having flexibility with other programs that are out there that are definitely going to have a positive impact on our youth.
Okay, be happy to work with you on that.
Great, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to follow up some questions that Councilman Heenan had asked regarding tobacco use and smoking cessation programs. Recently, Councilman Jones introduced a resolution for hearings on some of the types of products that are cigar, cigar-type products in the City of Philadelphia, and how those products are marketed and packaged, and what can we do in that regard. From the work that your office has done on smoking cessation programs, what type of perspective do you have on how we address some of the proliferation of these cigarrillos who are flavored and all kinds of dynamics that we have in the city?
Yeah, the, the products you're talking about are something we are very, very concerned about. To give you a sense, you can buy a pack of cigarettes in the city for $10, $11, but you can get a pack of four cigarrillos, I'm not saying that right, but four cigarrillos for a dollar. And they generally have flavorings that are similar to the flavorings in candy, French vanilla, grape, watermelon, fruit punch, and they're sold right next to candy bars in, in small stores all over the city. And that's probably why smoking rates among teenagers are higher for cigars than they are for cigarettes these days. About 10 percent of our teenagers are smoking cigars, and only 7 percent are smoking cigarettes, and that's changed just in the past few years. So we think this is something that very much needs to be looked into. The tobacco industry has essentially figured out a way to get around some of the existing taxes and regulations to market these very cheap tobacco products and to entice our youth into smoking them.
What are other jurisdictions doing to address this issue?
Well, in San Francisco, there's a council member who's introduced a legislation that would prohibit the use of flavorings in any smoked tobacco products. That would include these candy flavorings in cigarrillos, would also include menthol in cigarettes, which is itself a big problem. In New York, the, the mayor and, and other council members are supporting legislation that would set a minimum price for these cigarrillos at $2 per cigar, so it would be $8 per pack, so it gets closer to the price of a pack of, of cigarettes. So there isn't a big economic driver for young people to buy the cigarrillos as opposed to a pack of cigarettes.
Those legislative efforts regarding minimum price or flavoring cigar-type products, would they be preempted at the state level?
We don't think so. We think that they're possible here as well.
Also, I want to bring your attention to page 171 of the budget detail regarding the contract for Fremont Long-Term Care, which my understanding that's for the Philadelphia nursing home.
Correct.
When is that contract up for RFP again?
We are looking now at putting out an RFP. It's, it has not been RFP'd in a number of years, but we think it's time to do that.
So you're looking at it to put up an RFP in the coming fiscal year or next fiscal year?
Yeah, it would be, it would be in the coming fiscal year, yes.
The reason why I raise that issue, because I know for a number of years, various advocates in the disability community have raised concerns about the Philadelphia nursing home, and I know there's an ongoing conversation about that facility and whether we should continue to operate that facility or not. And so I think, considering that you're thinking about doing RFP, this will be an opportune time to have a conversation about that issue.
Appreciate that, and, you know, when we get to that point, we would appreciate any connections that, that you or advocates have with other nursing home operators that we feel, that they feel are high-quality operators, so that we get a good number of bidders on the, on providing that service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go on record to offer my support for Councilman Heenan's efforts around childhood obesity. By way of background, I worked very, very closely with your predecessor, Dr. Schwartz, on a major proposal that was funded by, ultimately funded by the National Institutes of Health, which were in Philadelphia, ultimately won the award to look at childhood obesity in Philadelphia. So I don't know at what date that ended, clearly before your arrival, but we were successful in being awarded the grant, and I was told by the department, once the grant had rolled out, that we were beginning to see some real changes in the obesity epidemic facing, facing our children. By way of information, it was actually my menu labeling bill that led to the, the great discussion that led to the grant that led to us getting awarded. So if there's going to be an effort to reignite that effort, I welcome an opportunity to sit with you and Councilman Heenan on that, because sustainability is really the issue, and it's still very much an epidemic among our kids.
It is, and we appreciate your leadership in this. As I said, obesity rates in children are going down in Philadelphia now, I think, in large part because of the work that's been done, but they're not going down nearly fast enough, so we need to do more.
Okay, all right then, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for, you know, drawing the initial attention here in this legislative body, the childhood of obesity. You know, all I do is, you know, take a lot of the good things that you started and, and make it, make it fun and try to keep it, keep it moving. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. I just, yeah, I appreciate the effort around children and obesity, and wonder what, if any, the conversations is the Health Department having with the school district? Many years ago, we started a conversation of bringing back kitchens and the quality of food that's served. What, if any, conversations are happening at that level?
You know, we're engaged very much with the, the community schools in particular, but also a broader conversation with the school district about having healthy food, be putting schools, about having more physical activity, be integrated in the school day, and those, I can't give you details, but I can tell you, those conversations are positive.
Okay. We, we do a lot of breakfast and lunch in the summer. Some would argue some of what we purchase there is not as adequate either, so let me encourage you, it's hard to ask people to do what we don't do ourselves, let me encourage you to look at that component of it, because if we're going to get to that, we have to show people that it could be done, that it's affordable within the framework that, that we work at. I know Councilwoman Blackwell works really hard, and over the last couple of years, we've tried to recruit as many breakfast, lunch programs all over the city, because one of the statistics we learned here is, in the summer, there are a lot of kids who go hungry, and that's a reality that, that we work with in districts like mine. So let me strongly encourage that conversation, because those are not as good as they could be or should be.
I appreciate that.
Wanted to go back, you know, there's, there's a lot of debate, I don't like cigarettes, don't like anything about it, but a lot of the small businesses between, you know, the sugar beverage and the cigarette discussion feel like your department has, has overreached. What are we doing to add, to, to secure that people understand that we're being proactive and that we're not incentivizing, you know, bad behavior from the businesses? What are we doing to incentivize folks to move away from these products?
To me, to move away from selling cigarettes and other tobacco products?
Yep.
Yeah, so we are, we have offered technical assistance to retailers that are selling tobacco to switch to healthier products. And in addition to technical assistance, in some cases, we can actually provide some small amount of financial assistance. It's a, it's a new program, we don't have a large number, but we do have at least a half a dozen businesses that have either made the switch or committed to making the switch to selling healthier products. to making the switch to selling healthier products. And they're learning and we're learning with them about ways they can do that and make a profit with products that don't kill people.
Again, what are we doing on the sugary basis? And have we looked at what other affordable, comparable? You and I have had this challenge because is, you know, one of the challenges for me with the tax wasn't that it was about soda, but it was about all the cultural drinks and all the others. Have we been working with businesses around that and have we created a glossary of affordable options?
The city has, as you probably know, a, not a grant program, but some sort of financial assistance for small businesses that can switch to healthier products.
No, I know, we, Councilwoman Black, I mean, Blondell added that. But again, from a health perspective, from your department, as you work with businesses, you know, you're in inspecting businesses, what efforts have we done?
Well, we're encouraging them to promote the healthier beverages, in particular bottled water. You know, in the tax that was passed in Berkeley, California, they did a one-year evaluation, they had a 10% decline in the sales of sweetened beverages.
We're not a comparable market. I'm not going to buy that argument. We're not a comparable market. What I'm saying is, have we created a glossary of alternative affordables for folks? Because it's a different market. What I see in my stores is very different. I have an interest for folks to have healthy alternatives. I just don't know what they are outside of water.
Well, I know, the answer to a specific question, no, we haven't developed a glossary. It's not that complicated. If it's a beverage that it's not sweetened with either caloric sweetener or artificial sweeteners, then it's not taxed. In that case, it's healthier. So that would be water, seltzer water, unsweetened teas, milk, 100% fruit juice.
Okay. And then lastly, as it relates to some of this opioid addiction pieces, and I know the Health Department is involved, what, if anything, are we doing at our health centers around educating staff and clients?
Around opioids?
Yep.
You know, we're working around, trying to think. The opioid problem, I believe, has begun with physicians over-prescribing opioids. We are making sure that we don't do that ourselves, that we are prescribing opioids safely. We are also developing a pilot program where we provide medication-assisted treatment in our own clinics. So with this drug, Suboxone, patients don't need to go to specialized substance-use treatment centers to get treatment for substance use problems. We want to be able, see if we can make that service available in our health centers themselves. There are many issues around that, and so I don't know how far we'll go with that, but I can say we're piloting that. That is our main responsibility. We think we need to educate the entire city about the risks of these drugs, which is why we launched that media campaign yesterday, in addition to the writing of letters to physicians across the entire city, encouraging them to prescribe less.
Right. And that's why I wanted to know, what are we doing in our health centers? Again, we're very quick to ask other people to do stuff. What are we doing within our own health facilities? You know, how are we networking with our federally, you know, funded ones to do an education campaign? Is that included in your PR campaign?
The...
Because they touch base with thousands of people, you know. So what are we doing to incorporate and infuse that in our treatment at our health center basis?
The opioid problem is very big and it runs across the entire population and it crosses the entire city. We think that the way to reach all those people is through the mass media, so that's why we have the media campaign. I don't know what detailed conversations happened with counseling of doctors and patients there. We have a lot of committed doctors, I'm sure that they're working with people so that they don't overuse opioids. I can't give you more detail than that, but I can say as far as the organized program, we're trying to reach everyone through the media campaign.
Okay. Well, let me strongly encourage you to work by creating something. I think that's a place, people are in the waiting room, whether it's, you know, you're going to do a media campaign, which is the video, whether it's the videos at our health centers. There's so many opportunities that I don't think we're maximizing, where we can be sending these messages in a proactive way. So let me strongly encourage you to do that. Maybe the same, some of the same media pieces that you're going to use here, I think they should be at every one of our health centers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Dr. Farley and your team for your testimony here. This will conclude our hearing. We're going to take a recess, start back up with DHS at 2:15. Thank you.
Thank you.